Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 2022 meeting of the Town of Kent Planning Board. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Gentlemen, can, oh, I'm sorry. Members, can you, can I have a motion to open the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
Two.
And we'll do it all at once. How do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Have you all read the minutes from last month, from February?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from last month?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
Jean Carlo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Phil?
I vote aye.
And we're up to Friedland. Is there anyone here representing Friedland tonight? Can you give us a brief rundown of why you're here? And you, excuse me, before you start, anyone who comes up to the microphone, please say your name and your relationship and why you're here. Thank you.
My name is John Correll. I'm representing the Friedlanders. You've seen this before. It's a resisting house in the Gypsy Trail Club. They proposed to take down a portion of the house and rebuild the larger addition and build a swimming pool that overlooks the lake. And I think we're pretty much satisfied with all the comments. We got the Gypsy Trail Club letter, which says the club approved the building.
Thank you. Members, any questions? None. Can I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second that.
And Hugo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Jean Carlo?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
And I vote aye, too. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Don't rush. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Simon, and a second, please.
I'll second it.
Stephen, and Hugo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Jean Carlo?
Aye.
And what's his name on the name? Simon? And I vote aye, too. Can I get a motion to move this to administrative track?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
Second.
And Simon?
Aye.
Jean Carlo?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I vote aye, too.
He needs a name list.
Is there any? Wait, there's a bond.
Good evening. Just for the record, John Andrews, Rhode Island Andrew's, engineer to the planning board. There's one additional item. As Mr. Correll says, they did get the final letter from Gypsy Trail Club. We would recommend a bond estimate in the amount of $3,700. We would ask you to accept that bond amount and recommend approval, referral to the town board for approval. We had discussed during the pennyboard workshop about waiting until the Gypsy Trail Club letter came. It's here, so we can move this ahead. And as Mr. Correll did indicate, most of the items have been resolved. So once that bond comes back, we can complete the process.
Thank you. Bruce?
Good evening. I'm Bruce Barber, the town's environmental consultant. Based upon the current application, all environmental issues have been resolved and completed. My office has no additional comments. I recommend a co-administrative, and I recommend the bond be accepted by the town board as well.
Thank you, Bruce. Liz, you have anything to add here?
No.
All right. Members, can I get a motion to recommend a $3,700 bond to the town board for acceptance?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jean Carlo?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
And I vote aye, too. Is there anything else we have to do on this? Thank you. You have any other questions for us?
No, I don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Consultants, what do we have to do about Kent Highway Garage? Kent Highway.
Kent Highway, as you all know, this is a brief land swap. The town of Kent is exchanging about a tenth of an acre for receiving about a hundredth of an acre and getting rid of about a tenth and a half of an acre. It equalizes the lot line. There's a couple different moving pieces. It is simply a lot line realignment. You do have a memo. There is no public hearing requirement. The highway superintendent has asked for some waivers. Liz has kindly marked up her memo to indicate what those waivers are. So we would recommend that the planning board adopt those waivers. There's a couple minor things. We did get some comments from one of the planning board members that we will be moving, we will be working with highway superintendent Othmer with the surveyor to complete that. And other than that, it's, I think, ready to move forward. And I believe, turning it over to Liz, I think she had some comments, but she's also prepared a resolution for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Liz Axelson, planning consultant to the planning board. And I had, we'd had an application review meeting with superintendent Othmer and kind of walked him quickly through the process. He expressed his concerns about the timeline and at that time reassured us that a former road right-of-way that went from the end of Ludington Court over to I-84, that was there for construction of I-84, had already been merged into the two lots. So he was under the impression that that was done. And so we asked about it because the parcel boundaries look different than what was presented on the lot line revision. That's understandable now that we know that that still remains to be, the paperwork needs to be finalized. So that was one aspect of it. So in any case, we had the meeting on February 22nd, our normal application review meetings where all the consultants have a Zoom call with potential applicants and try to explain to them the process. So what I tried to do is write a review letter the very next day, dated February 23rd. And it's all based on code. And it's all based on making sure that it's very, very clear what's getting traded. Because a lot of these things, as you know, go down the line. They don't get filed. They're not clearly stated, and things get a little unfortunate. Sometimes those lot lines aren't clear. So that was my February 23rd review memo. And then Rich Othmer and I had some communication. And also, he wrote a letter requesting waivers. And so what I did was I went back through the February 23 memorandum and I gave you a March 9, 2022 update. And what I did was I put red Xs through certain aspects of that review that I thought it would be safe to not include. So that had to do with the--
Oh, and I thought that meant include them.
Ha ha. So getting rid of the zoning table and also no need to name the school, fire, and special districts. But everything else has to do with properly showing the transfer so that down the road, this is recorded properly. And then I prepared a draft resolution. And as you know, there's no hearing. Do you guys all have the draft resolution, guys and cows? Okay. And so I'm going to give you a quick walkthrough. So basically, I'm looking at this draft for today's date, describing the application, describing the transfer of .147 acres, net for .147 acres from Highway Garage to the nursery parcel. And the resulting lot sizes would be changed by .147. So the highway would be 3.594 acres and the nursery would be 6.147. No changes in use or development activities. Lot line changes based on a map by David Odell, dated December 10, 21, revised February 11, 2022. I understand also from speaking with Rich that he's asking his surveyor to make those changes as quickly as possible. Thanks to John Andrews, a short EAF was submitted. And then the first resolve basically says, proposed lot line is a type 2 action under SEACRA, which means it doesn't require any further SEACRA review or any determination of significance or non-significance. And then the next resolve is the planning board granting approval with conditions to the proposed revised lot line as depicted again on Mr. Odell's map, revised February 11, 22. And then resolve the approval is expressly conditioned on completion and compliance with the following. And there are basically four conditions. And the first one has to do with John Andrews' comments. The second condition I left as a blank because, Bruce, I didn't know if you had. I'm sorry, the third one. No, I took out yours. You didn't have any comments. Okay, sorry. Two is, has a couple blanks in it. That's address the comments of the planning board's planning consultant as set forth in a memorandum dated February 23. And then I added in, with the exception of the comments waived by the planning board numbered, thinking you would do a separate waiver. And then they have to provide documentation of filing and deed conveyance from Putnam County and the town of Kent regarding the road, as I explained before, payment of fees. And then the last one is that they have to address all the conditions. So first, do you have any questions at all about this one?
Anybody?
No.
Liz, did you get that email I sent up to you the other day about my recommendations for a couple more conditions?
I may have, but I didn't open it. Do you have a copy or do either of you?
I just wrapped it up on, I figured it would be all part of mine.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So it's in your--
It will be taken care of when I go sit down with the highway superintendent, yes.
Okay. Is that, is that, is that--
Yeah, yeah.
And we can add language in.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there were a couple issues I was concerned about, like the corrections on the map and the proof of filing and the proof of the deeds, the approval of proposed descriptions by the town attorney.
Yeah, some of those are--
Stuff that, stuff that always falls through the cracks.
Well, yeah, and--
And we're not going to let it.
Yeah, and I think we, we may have kind of overlapped a little bit because there is a requirement. If you look at my comment number 10, and again, John's covering this, per section 66A, 10F, upon approval, the proposed deeds of conveyance shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board attorney. Upon notification by the planning board attorney, the deeds are in conformity with the provisions of Chapter 66A, the applicant shall submit the Mylar for signature by the planning board chairman. So that, I think, covers one of your points.
Some of the--
What were the others?
Well, it's a couple of word in mind, Emma, and then he gave you a red line up in the map that he asked.
Yeah.
You just have to--
Okay.
Yeah, there's some information we want added to the map, and there's some corrections that need to be done.
Okay. And was, did any of yours have to do with that deed conveyance between Putnam County and the town that never got finalized?
Yes, one of those was there as well.
Okay, good. Well, that, that condition's in there, too. So I think we, I think we've got it covered.
Yes, we do. That's how you make it, that's how you change your memo.
That's fine. I'd rather, I'd rather clear it up.
This is like the third time that I have encountered municipalities dropping the ball on the recording of legal documents.
It happens.
Yeah.
It happens.
Yeah, municipalities are the worst.
Well, I mean, understand, we just went through this with the former Kent Developments, current old 17 LLC, where we did finally get everything reviewed.
Yeah.
And they did a good job, you know, the applicant did a good job of providing the documents that we need. But now, a lot of those are going to have to be changed. So those conditions got put back in old 17 LLC's approval. So it looks like a lot more conditions, but it's all the same stuff with the new owner.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that aside, what I would like to do is do a simple resolution, if you're okay with doing the waivers. I wasn't certain. So the planning board, I would suggest and recommend that you consider waiving comments of the planning consultant's memo dated February 23, 2022, comment 1A and B, having to do with zoning table. I would like you to waive that. And then also to waive the same memo, comment 6AII, the name of any school, fire, and special district, because I think those are not necessary. We could let those go. Does that make sense? So do you want to go ahead and vote on the waiver?
Any questions, any comments? Can I get a motion to--
Do we do all the waivers at once?
I'm sorry?
What?
Do you do all the waivers at once?
Yeah, there are two waivers, which are comments 1A and B plus 6AII from the February 23 memorandum by your planning consultant.
Are you okay, Simon? Yep. Can I get a motion to waive those clauses?
There are comments that would no longer be conditions.
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second that.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jean Carlo?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
And I vote aye, too.
Okay, so then, then going back to the resolution, if you're ready to entertain that, I'm going to add in on my condition number two that I drafted for you. It says, with the exception of comments waived by the planning board numbered 6A and B. Well, I'll write that in correctly, the ones that you waived. So, any questions about the resolution? Do approve with conditions, lot line revision?
Questions?
No. Yeah, and you send it to admin track, too?
I'm sorry.
Anyone send it to admin track, too? That would finish the process?
Well, the way it works is if you approve it tonight, they just have to come back and address the conditions. And then Bruce and John and I will review their submittal for the conditions. And when we all certify in a memo that they're all done, and that allows Phil to sign the map and things to be filed, so.
But we don't need, we can send us off to admin track right now.
There's no admin track for this because you're doing an approval with resolution, with conditions. Does that make sense?
I just want to make sure that we're making, pushing this law.
Yep.
We don't want them coming back.
No, this is it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Remind me, what are we voting on now?
So you're voting on a draft resolution of SEACRA type 2 action and approval with conditions for revised lot line for Kent Highway Garage and Kent Nursery Lot Line Revision Review.
Right, no. And can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And Simon, how do you vote? Jean Carlo?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
And I vote aye, also. Are we done?
You're done. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Pink Sugar Pastries. Is there anyone here representing Pink Sugar Pastries?
Hi, my name is Martha Perez. I'm the owner of Pink Sugar Pastries.
Hello.
And I'm here because I want to put a sign on the facade, on the storefront, on my storefront for my business.
You want to put a 12-foot sign in a 10-foot space?
Yes.
Do you guys want to speak to this? Anybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, please. Please.
Do you want to show them the--
Oh, yes, yes.
Sorry.
She's complying. We just got accepted.
Oh, all right. So we just have to vote to accept?
Yeah, we just have to vote to accept.
Anybody have any questions?
The person who made the sign, did they measure the other signs that were on the facade? And that's why they came up with that size?
Yes, they measured the newer signs. The older signs, they didn't because they're made of wood. So we went with an average size between the two other signs. Yeah.
And John, this was also, I don't know if you saw it,
this is a code compliant, she does not have to go to the zoning board.
That's right.
So I'll just vote on it, and that's it.
Oh. Can I get a motion to accept this?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second that.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jean Carlo?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yeah.
Stephen?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Can you make sure you're approving it?
Yeah.
No conditions? Just--
Just a straightforward approval.
We're approving her application.
Did I say it wrong, Liz?
No, just--
Please tell me.
I want, I want her not to have to come back.
No, she's, we're approving it.
We approve the sign.
We approve the sign.
It is approved.
Yes, she can put, hang her sign.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Was this, was this a brand-new sign? Or was it an existing sign?
No, it's brand--
That was repainted.
Yes, it's a brand-new sign.
It's a brand-new sign. Yeah, we thought so. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for us?
At the moment, no.
Please put up your sign.
Thank you so much.
Good luck to you over there.
Thank you.
And is there anyone here from Kent South?
Can I just, just, I want to make sure, did you guys all get the follow-up after Bill Walters weighed in?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Yeah, it was code compliant, didn't have to go to zoning, yep.
Is there anyone here from Kent South Storage? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tom Carrigan. I'm the civil engineer with Site Design Consultants, the engineers on this project. The project's been forward to board for a while now, so we've been working towards getting kind of the last comments from your consultants addressed. We believe we've got, we've addressed all the comments from Liz Axelson. One of the last remaining things was she requested that we provide samples of the stone veneer on the retaining wall and the aluminum side, aluminum fencing that's above one of the retaining walls to this board for its consideration. For obvious reasons, we couldn't provide the stone and the actual fencing, but we do have, have it with me tonight, pictures of each of these. If you want to take a look at them. We also were working on a comment letter from John Andrews. Having reviewed that, he seemed to feel that the, one of the big last outstanding items was the easement agreement for the proposed sidewalk along Route 311. We prepared the agreement and we've sent it to the town attorney, but we haven't heard back from them yet. And then the last thing is that one of his other comments was regarding the DOT permit. We have verbal confirmation that this will be extended for another year. We're waiting for an actual letter or email for final confirmation of that, but we expect to get it soon.
Great, thank you. Members, any questions? John, I mean, please.
If I may, I just want to give you an update. Following the workshop, I was asked to contact Jeff Battistoni so that we could move that sidewalk easement along. I sent him an email the next morning. He and I had played a bit of telephone tag. He was scheduled to call me today. He did not call me, so I don't have an update, but I will continue to pursue him until I do. And I, I think it's just a simple matter of resolving the language, eliminating the concerns of the board, and, and making sure we're all on the same page. But we, I am trying to move it ahead, and I apologize, but he promised he was going to call me today. And by the time I left this afternoon, he had not gotten back to me. So I will continue and send him another email tomorrow morning.
So there's nothing we can do?
Nothing we can, nothing you can do tonight. But they, they're in good shape. Tonight is theoretically, and Liz will correct me if I'm wrong, they were to report to you at the end of their first 90-day extension. This is near about the end of the 90-day extension. It appears as though they have made a reasonable effort to comply with this and that most of the outstanding issues are in the process of being worked out. And for instance, DOT is beyond their control. When you get a DOT paperwork, they'll get it to you when they get it to you. So having said that, I think, I don't see, unless Liz disagrees or Bruce, I see no reason to not continue with the second 90-day extension. I don't think you need to take any action. The only action you would have had to take is if they had not made meaningful progress. But I believe they have.
And I just want to make sure we get on the record that regarding maintenance of the sidewalk, there was language in there, there was an issue with that. We want to make sure it's clear that when the sidewalk goes in, that the maintenance, the day-to-day, daily maintenance of the snow removal, the cleaning of the sidewalks will be on, will be the burden of the owner, not the town.
Yeah, the owner is aware of this and is wanting to accept the maintenance.
Yeah, the maintenance will be, I don't mind if I say something like civil structural, you know, that'll be part of the, you know, the maintenance of it would be onto the town.
Yeah.
Because, you know, town would install it later if they did, or some other way.
All right.
Members, any questions? Liz, any questions?
I'm just, you have the update, the review of what remains. So, you know, keeping in mind, this one is under conditions of approval. It's under two 90-day extensions, as, as we all know. And, but I just tried to look ahead. And what I did at the end of my memorandum, well, I guess it's almost, yeah, it's the end, page three, under the recommendation, it just reiterates what you did and that you're having this discussion tonight. But I'm also kind of giving you a heads up kind of giving you a heads up that the first 90-day period ended March 8th, the second 90-day period ends Monday, June 6th, which is before your June meeting, and so you'll need to have something in writing in time before the May 12th meeting, and the planning board will have to consider whether to do a reapproval at that time, but that reapproval would be, it would go forward from June 6th for a year. So I feel positive about the progress report we've had. I also reiterated the same concern about the easement, and I think what I suggested is that review by both boards, meaning Planning Board and Town Board and their attorneys, should continue till we get to easement language that's acceptable to the board.
Thank you.
That's it.
Bruce, you have something to add? Members, any questions?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to give them another 90-day extension?
We don't have to do that?
No, no, we don't have to do that.
You'll need to do that in...
So we don't have anybody?
You'll need to do that in a couple of months.
Nothing to do?
Nothing to do. That's it. Just giving you an update.
Thank you, and thank you. Do you have any other questions for us?
No, I just, I think John answered what he said, he was in contact with the town attorney on the easement agreement.
Excellent. Thank you.
Let's keep it moving.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here for the Chen Chin property? Consultants, anything you want to add?
Okay, there is a memo, and basically, I'll keep this short and simple. Both the ECP, erosion control permit and wetland permits, have been closed out. They, for some reason, this one fell through the cracks, but we've kind of caught it. It survived at least one winter, based on our records and when things were issued. So you have a simple task tonight. You need to authorize the return of a ECP bond in the amount of $1,760, and you have to authorize the return of a wetland mitigation bond in the amount of $2,000. And that will fully close out this project, and it's done. The people do have a CO, and this is just a kind of a paperwork catch-up.
Thank you, John. Can I get, let's see if I can do this. Can I get a motion to authorize a $1,760 ECP bond and a $2,000 wetland mitigation bond?
Okay.
Return.
To be returned? Make that motion? The applicant, Chen Chin property.
I'll second.
Do you need a motion?
We did first.
I made the motion.
I'll second. And Hugo, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Sabrina?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
And I vote aye, too.
Thank you very much.
Are we good here? Now we're all done with this? And they're out? Is there anyone here from Route 52 Development? I don't think they're showing up tonight, is what I've heard.
Good evening again. The board will recall at the workshop that the Route 52 Development had submitted some materials to the board and to the consultants, and based upon our presorial review, we found that the application materials were not sufficient to commence review, and we asked the recommendation of this board as to how to proceed, and if you recall, the board indicated that it would be best and most time and cost-effective to hold off on review until we had additional information. Subsequent to that, we heard from Michael Caruso, who is the applicant's attorney, and also Liz today heard from Peter Scott's office, who is the applicant's engineer. Mr. Scott, according to Liz, has requested we, as the consultants, have an offline consultation with the applicant and their consultants. We wish to, again, get the recommendation from the board on how to proceed. We are of the mindset, and our recommendation is that we have a memo outstanding from March 2020, that the applicant has not yet replied to sufficiently in annotated form, so we know what is and what is not complete. And it would be, I think, most efficient to ask first to receive that information in writing from the applicant, and then we could revisit this in terms of commencing review. But we did want to get your recommendation, if you felt it appropriate for us to meet with them offline and speak with them, and that's what we're discussing this evening.
Is there any reason why not to?
The only reason why not to, I think, is because it would be more efficient if we had a better idea of exactly what the project is moving forward. There's been some changes, and yet we've been asking the same questions since March of 2020. And so I think the first step, for both the applicant and for the board and for the consultants, in terms of the most efficient, time and cost-effective step, is answer the review memo. That precludes us hunting and pecking and looking and searching for answers on plans and the narratives, so that we can then say, okay, you know, this is what's still outstanding, but we can start a meaningful and good review. So that's our thinking, but if the board feels it would be most efficient for us to have an offline conversation with them, we'll happy to do so.
Did they express why they wanted an offline?
Liz, you're going to have to handle that one. I wasn't part of that conversation, Sabrina, so hold on.
So I think they probably feel frustrated, but I believe that John and Bruce and I feel...
Frustrated by us or by you?
Frustrated by not having the result that they're requesting. Ultimately, their goal is that they want to show that they've changed the project enough on several fronts that the board would have to do, they want us to, the board, to adopt a new scoping outline for the environmental impact statement for the project. But we need to know that they're actually changing the project enough that it's necessary for the board to go through that whole process again. And so we had met with them in March 2020, and walked through what would be needed, and that meeting was summarized in that March 24, 2020 memo. We don't mean to be beating a dead horse, but what's happened is there have been five or six times when they've sent us what looked like a decent package of information and plans, but once we've started looking through it, we realized that there were key questions not answered, phasing, mining, zoning, earlier on, whether or not there was a truck stop. Now, some of those questions are kind of answered, but it's not real clear in their record.
Do we have to ignore a potential different mining law?
Well, if, they have, I have been verbally told by Mr. Cleary that they are no longer mining, but when Bruce and John and I put our heads together and reviewed the materials, they're still removing 5 million-plus cubic yards of material, which is, exactly.
It's all about vocabulary.
It is. So, so, so basically...
Yes, they're not mineral mining, they are rock mining.
Yes. And the thing is...
Soil or soil or...
Right.
However you want to look at it. Still mining, it's a matter of semantics. Oh, yes, but D, but the DEC does delineate between the two.
And what the town of Kent law, when it finally happens, will say, you don't know either, maybe.
Well, the challenge that we have is there's a lot of conflicting information. Like Steve, in one section of an email, it says there's no longer any mining going on at all. And yet, in another section of the report, there is all kinds of reference relative to 5 million cubic yards of material, and that's exactly the same number as the first iteration. So we're puzzled in terms of how to proceed on this, because we're getting the same information, and we'd like to move forward with this, it's just that we don't want to waste people's time.
I think they should put together a response to your memo and then meet with us. Until they provide all the information that we requested, we can't do anything. Meeting with them would just burden you and your team, and it would just, it doesn't do anything.
I have a...
Tell them we did this documentation.
I have a couple of different other fears, too, because people have a tendency to think that when they meet with us, it's effectively the same as meeting with you folks, but truth be told, I do not vote. I am your consultant. You guys are the need to make the final decisions, so that if they're going to meet with us, it should be about technical substance, not policy. And unless and until we get a detailed analysis, I don't know what's going to transpire. And as a consequence, it's either they come to you and have that discussion with you, once you see what it is they're doing, and then authorize the offline meeting, but in any event, I think the key thing to keep in mind here is, and I'm not citing any devious motive on their part, but I think they're trying to fast-track the process by kind of avoiding the key element, and the key element is you folks. You guys are the ones that have to vote on it at the end of the day. So, and you're relying on us to tell you whether it's something that meets the code or not.
But I'm wondering if they want the offline meeting, and you spoke to them, right? Like, is it that they kind of want a direction so that they can sort of fast-track it, but with a direction as to what they can and cannot do? Or was that addressed?
Well, it's kind of a two-part answer. So years ago, when we had the offline consultation, everybody sat in a room, their consultants and us, and hammered out what did we need to put in front of the planning board, so that the planning board had a reason to reconsider any of the scoping outline for the environmental impact statement. And for me, and I think also for Bruce and John, this is a time and cost thing. So the planning board put hours and hours and a lot of thought into that scoping outline with our assistance, and in fact, they held two scoping sessions, they closed a scoping session, we were ready to adopt, and then there was a last-minute change literally at that meeting. We reopened, the board went through a whole other determination of significance in the environmental review, and adopted a whole new scope, which we redrafted. And so my feeling is, and the board really put a lot of energy, all the talk about phasing and everything, it all came from the board thinking about their community, so I want to know that the applicant representatives have provided us enough information that tips the threshold where we need to actually say to the board, okay, here's how this project changed, it's very clear the project's changed, you now have to change your seeker positive declaration and your scoping outline for the project's environmental impact statement. But we just haven't gotten there, and they have never given us that.
And we haven't had enough to do any action beyond the scoping.
Exactly.
As far as we've gotten on this project.
And we, you know, also, I want to point out how this kind of occurred. I had done a review, and I'm thinking to myself, I could write up a new memo, and then Bruce and John reached out, and they had reviewed separately, but got to a point of frustration, and you know when you're not getting what you need, that you can't just keep reviewing, and you can't write it up. And the three of us put our heads together in an online meeting and decided that there was no reason to do a write-up. It would have been a waste of time and money.
And there's several outstanding studies, too, that there are traffic and everything, because we need to know what they're planning for, the people, they don't have any of that information.
Ah.
So we don't, we don't...
I've got it as well.
I think they know exactly what they're doing. They don't need any direction. They know.
Don't we have to consider what the town board is doing?
And I think, I...
And we also have to look at the town board, it's the authority to what we're doing.
Right, because they may change the whole thing.
We can't even, we don't even have enough information today, Mr. Chairman, to adequately advise you as to how to approach that. That's one of the items. But I need to make a couple, couple other points. What would probably be the best thing to do is to authorize Liz, since they seem to like to talk to Liz, authorize Liz to say, to communicate with them and say, look, you give us a response to the March 24, 2020 memo, for us to, for us to review, and then if that is substantive enough, the board will authorize an offline meeting at some future date.
Correct.
But one caveat that I would like to make is they tend to want to bring their attorney to meetings. I have a difficult time meeting with an applicant and their attorney without having our attorney on the same side, sitting with me. So any authorization that you do issue for an offline meeting, I would respectfully request that you include Jeff Battistoni, so that it...
Could we just request them not to bring him?
You could do that as well. That would, that's the other way to approach it.
Can we just do a workshop with them?
We could refer to it as a technical consultation process, not a legal process.
They can come to any workshop, they can come to this meeting, nobody precluded them from coming.
Shakespeare said it right a long time ago, you know.
If I can just suggest one other thing, too, is that if there's concurrence with having them respond to this March 2020 memo, which I think is really the first important step, I think it's been at least a couple of years, and there's several members of the board here who haven't seen this project before. I think they should come with whatever amendments they've made, what their current project is, give a presentation to the board, so you all know what's going on, and then you can authorize a technical meeting thereafter. Everybody's on the same page, everybody's seen the project in terms of where we are currently, with, and everybody has an understanding. And with respect to the attorney, yes, Dennis, it can be couched as a technical meeting only, with only technical consultants, and that would prevent the attorneys from coming if you want.
You know, we need Jeff Battistoni to be there at a later date with you.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Or the lawyers want to talk, once we get everything together and they give us all the information, same thing, we're allowing them to, the lawyers can talk.
Yeah, right. I mean, eventually, the whole thing will open up to all the consultants, and that's fine, but I think that, you know, getting a response back, so we know where they're at, you know, with the March 20th or 2020 memo, then giving you a presentation of where they are at, so you all know what's going on, and then if you feel comfortable to have an offline technical consultation, that's fine. Okay? So that's where I think you might want to consider being.
I think they should show their face, we haven't seen them in two years.
Let them do their, address the number.
We do first.
Yeah. Okay? So maybe it would be authorizing Liz to send an email or a memo to them memorializing this, ceasing you, because I also feel very comfortable that everything is in writing these days.
Absolutely. Okay. And I want to remember, remind the newer members, if you want to get background information on any of this, speak to the boss.
She's got it. There's a lot.
Just don't want to ask me to get the files, Bruce, I thought you said something.
I got nothing, no. I said, I said, let's keep it technical.
Okay.
Yeah, they've got to answer our concerns, and then we'll talk to them.
Yep, so we'll put our heads together and send them a message and start the process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, do you have any questions for us? Sir?
Phil, Phil, that's...
Jackie.
Jackie, that's Jackie.
Jackie, sir.
Oh, yeah.
That's okay, that's okay.
Who wants to work below the line, now that I've screwed everything up?
Bruce kind of elected me before the meeting, so I guess I'll go through it.
You're lucky, Dan.
Okay, below the line, Old 17 LLC. That is, that I will defer to Liz, because she is, according to my records, responsible for verifying that they have satisfied all the conditions of the approval, and I will let her talk about that.
And I'll be brief. So I was expecting a response, as always, where somebody writes a letter from the applicant's team, listing each of the conditions and attaching all the information that they need to address that condition, and at some point, we got an email that was a blurb in an email and a few attachments, and so I instructed accordingly how that had to happen. So I'll follow up. I saw something from Jamie saying, oh, we did that already, so I will look in my email.
Thank you.
Okay, next one is New York City DEP, Churchill Road. We are waiting a submittal. I believe that the forester has been in contact with Vera, and he intends to make a submittal for the March, or for the April meeting.
Yeah.
So we should see them back.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they won't cut until the fall?
No, they're not going to do anything until half of November 1st.
Next is Roncalo. This board authorized the return of the bond, the matter is closed, and it can actually be...
Yeah, they're going to be re-approved on the 15th.
It can actually be removed from your below-the-line. Holly Property, we are still waiting a submittal, we haven't had any recent updates from the applicant. Nunziata Smalley Corners, we are again awaiting a submittal. White Vernon, Mr. Carell, who I see is left, was in touch with Vera this week. Apparently, they did receive a ZBA approval, I haven't seen exactly what it is yet, but he expects to be back on the agenda. I'm hoping he makes a submittal, but we'll see. Freel and Pure, we're still waiting to hear from their engineer, awaiting a submittal. Fragosi Marinelli, I have not received any comments yet from the Putnam County Health Department, but I see Mr. Walters is here, and I'll defer to him.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Bill Walters, Building Inspector. In reference to the Norhill Woods project, I lifted the stop-work order and allowed construction to come back in after discussion with Board of Health. Board of Health is waiting for explanation or a review from DEP, and they'll have to go out, once the ground softens back up, to start doing some more testing, but they don't have a problem with it as a point. So they are allowed to continue with construction, they can't finish anything on the outside, and they can't get a CO until everything's done.
I think I have to do a new PERC test on that?
Sounds like, sounds like. But with Board of Health approval, I did lift the stop-work order, so they are, they are allowed to go forward.
Is this the property that they put the locations on?
Yeah, yeah, and the house is in a different location, which it really isn't a big deal. They moved the house because of the rock, and they moved the septic because of the rock. How that finding didn't come up when they did the original PERC, don't know, but they're back to start doing construction again.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Clear Pool Maintenance Building, they are likewise waiting for a response from DEP regarding the septic rehabilitation on that site. As soon as they get that, I have been assured by Jamie from insight, that they will be making a resubmittal. The Renary Property, I think that's still awaiting a submittal. And then the Town of Kent Mining Law, our understanding is there's going to be a joint meeting of the boards, and at that conclusion of that joint meeting, whatever requirements you folks develop will be conveyed to us if necessary to revise the law. and at that conclusion of that joint meeting, um, whatever requirements, uh, you folks develop will be conveyed to us if necessary to revise the law. And we will, uh, we will await the results of that meeting.
Thank you. Now, members, any questions, comments? Jackie, welcome to the planning board.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us or them?
No, I'm just trying to sit and listen, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please. Drew? And Simon?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
And I vote aye, the meeting is closed, have a good night.